Well, I'll officially call the January the 11th, 2021, 6:30 meeting to order. And to begin that, we will have a pledge of allegiance to the flag.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Gloria, if you will, will you read the minutes of the December 9th, 2020 meeting?
And I think that I wrote the wrong date. It's December 14th was when we had our last monthly council meeting.
Okay.
Agenda is not quite correct.
All right.
The council met in regular session at the Westport Town Hall with the following present: Harry Prey III, President John Organist, Joyce Friendly, and Gloria Allenbaugh. Harry Prey called the meeting to order at 6:30 PM, followed by the pledge to the flag. Clerk Treasurer Gloria Allenbaugh read minutes from the November 9th council meeting. The minutes were approved as read by Joyce and seconded by John. Next was the signing of funeral deeds, payroll vouchers, adjustments, community contracts, and monthly bills. Next, we discussed the Westport Water Project update. The council reviewed the pay application number one for Senniman and Commonwealth, which was approved by John, seconded by Joyce. The council discussed the right-of-way issues on 950 South with Rachel Rungie from Commonwealth. Rachel also mentioned the upcoming wastewater timeline with IDIM and suggested that the council schedule a special meeting to review Commonwealth's preliminary engineering report for wastewater improvements. The council scheduled a special session for January 5th at 2:30 PM. Next, we discussed the Canes addition drainage study. Strand Engineering, represented by Steve Rubel, presented their recommendations for improving the drainage system at Wiley Street and Kathleen Drive. The council reviewed the report, which suggested that larger drainage ditches with coverts under each driveway be installed to help direct stormwater towards the field to the north of Wiley Street. Next steps will be to communicate with all property owners affected and obtain an estimate of cost to complete the project. Next, the council reviewed and signed the marshal and deputy marshal contracts for 2021. Then the council reviewed the salary ordinance for 2021, and Joyce made a motion to approve ordinance 2020-14, seconded by John with a vote three to zero. Next was the storage and distribution of portable hand washing stations. Main Street Incorporated will come up with a plan for storage and distribution of the portable hand washing stations purchased for use during outdoor events in town. Next was the, the council discussed appointing a representative for the area planning commission meetings. Joyce suggested Brian Gatewood, which was approved and seconded by John. Next, we had an end of the year summary presented by Council President Harry. He read a list of tasks completed by the council and town employees in 2020. The list was over 40 items long and included purchasing a new police car, cleaning up the town, and purchasing and selling new property in town, as well as several other items. Harry thanked everyone for their hard work and accomplishments. Next, Deputy Marshal Shane Lincoln presented October and November monthly police reports. And then from the floor, Clerk Treasurer Gloria reported that the Community Crossing Matching Grant Project is officially closed, and the town can start a new project for next year. $46,654 was received from the state for COVID-19 reimbursement, and the 2021 budget was approved. Gloria also presented her nepotism certificate for 2021. Next, Barb Winchester reported on the success of the Christmas tree lighting ceremony in Bazaar, adding that Santa would be at the Santa House on December 19th for the children. Barb also thanked the Police Department and Fire Department for escorting Santa to the Santa House for that event. Next, Robert Baldwin petitioned the council to approve a bathroom update in his garage at 405 West Mulberry Street. Joyce made a motion to approve the full bathroom addition, seconded by John. Next, Joyce made a motion to close the monthly meeting, which was seconded by John.
Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes? If not, I'll...
Make a motion to approve as read?
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Harry, I also have the special session meetings. You want me to go ahead and read them? On January 5th, 2021, the Westport Town Council held a special session at the Westport Town Hall with the following present: Harry Prey III, President John Organist, Joyce Friendly, and Gloria Allenbaugh. Harry Prey called the meeting to order at 2:30 PM. The topic of discussion was the Commonwealth presentation of the Westport Wastewater Utility Improvements Preliminary Engineering Report. Commonwealth Engineer Rachel Rungie presented a report on findings and recommendations as the Westport Wastewater Company is coming to the end of their compliance plan with IDIM. Commonwealth presented an updated compliance plan to gain more time with the state, but still shows that we are making steps to correct the wastewater overflow issues. IDIM expects Westport Wastewater to have zero sanitary sewer overflows, or SSOs, and zero wastewater violations. So the town has to make a decision to take steps such as moving forwards towards a new wastewater project to avoid fines or sewer ban from the state. The council discussed all their options with Commonwealth engineers and decided to make an official vote at the monthly council meeting on January 11th, 2021. John made a motion to close the meeting, seconded by Harry.
Are there any addition or corrections to those minutes as read? Not a...
Make a motion to approve?
I'll second that motion. All in favor?
Aye.
I got it. Okay, the next thing we have is the signing of funeral deeds, payroll vouchers, adjustment, and our monthly bills. Just one issue this time?
Yes.
Okay, next on, next on the agenda, which we cannot do tonight without Joyce being here. We had, we signed a, excuse me, new town ordinance last year that the officers of the Westport Town Council would be appointed each and every year. And since we don't have a...
Maybe this will show up yet.
Well, we could do that later, maybe. Okay, Westport Water Project Updates.
Email this. I don't know if I've got it now or not, but here's an update. Okay, so I have a couple of things. Okay, Senniman's still working out their water plant, that's Division A. They have submitted, we talked about this last time, a change order request to do a metal roof on the building instead of asphalt shingles. We worked with them, Damon and I were supposed to put together a couple of credits to kind of offset that cost. So I have that change order tonight to present to you. It is, the amount. Total increase is $21,118. And if you look to the back, or the second page, I guess, of that project update memo, it shows the status of our contingency. We have, we retained 5% contingency at the beginning of this project. We've spent hardly any of that, as you can see in this table. So we are, we are fine to process this if you guys approve it. Like I said, it's for the metal roof addition to... And corresponding to that, USDA, our funding agency, has given us the loan and grant for this project. They require the Commonwealth has a representative on site anytime there's work being performed, specifically earth moving or actual building work. With this change order, Senniman's requested an additional 30 days to the project schedule. So I have brought with me an amendment to Commonwealth's contract to cover that 30 days extra time to have an RPR here. So I have that for your review and a little bit as well.
Yep.
And then, one more thing, I'll let you, I'll let you have this. Approve them all at once if you like. Senniman has submitted another paper request. So this would be paper request number two, and in the amount of, total amount of $173, $730. And we've recommended to withhold a 5% retention amount. So I have those three items, nor your approval.
One thing, Rach, I'm kind of curious about this early into the project, and just kind of getting started, why is they asking for a 30-day extension?
They claim it's to order the material for the roof. I kind of wonder if it also has something to do with delays due to COVID. They were set to order the building and roof materials. The building, they have to build first, and they put the roof on it before they put the equipment in. So they should have ordered everything already, because if we have to process this change order, they're saying it's going to take an extra 30 days.
They're saying because of the process, all this order is going to take an extra 30 days?
Yeah. Because of the delay. From the metal roof.
Yeah. They're claiming they could have already made the order, but because of this delay in, in processing and approving it, it's going to take an extra 30 days.
All right. Do you have any questions, Sean?
No, we discussed it.
Rachel, how's the work going, on time, schedule?
So far, they're on schedule, yes. We have a construction progress meeting this week, Thursday, 14th, at 9:00 AM, and then Division B is at 10:00 AM here at Town Hall. They'll update us on the schedule then, and we'll go through your questions or concerns we have then. Over at the plant, they're moving along nicely. I mean, weather, weather hasn't hindered them too much out there. In town, again, O'Meara's the contractor in town, they're progressing nicely. They are getting close to wrapping up all the work in town. The next step they will need to do is to install, and I'm not sure if they've talked to this this week or not, the meter at the high school. If they've got to that this week or not.
No.
And then they will be submitting on the meter setters in town. We'll run that past Damon Martin-Jay and Colton. I did have one more thing to show you guys. I sent this, and I know Gloria, you've seen this on... The new building has a plaque, and we talked about the language and the coverage to put on it. I wanted to show you the proof of it, just to make sure we didn't misspell anybody's name or, or make any typos.
Well, Harry's trying to dig through and find all those things he's got to sign.
Yeah, fell, fell in the dead space for me.
I seen a, I seen the utility marker out there on the north side of 950 today. Is that something that we've seen progression on, or?
There's been some emails back and forth, and then he made...
Oh, darn it.
That's when I saw some emails.
I just saw him out there marking today, so I wasn't sure if it was connected with it.
That's nice. Signed that 2020. Whoops.
We may need to touch base later on about that issue. We're still working on it.
Good, I got two more. I'll sign these right this time. I got that big, right?
And then, any other questions you guys have, I'll, I'll be here.
No, nothing I can think of, Rachel. Oh, shoot. Anything else you want to say, John? Hold on. Keep signing?
Yeah, you got one more.
No, no, I don't think you do.
Okay.
At what point do we start to get drastically behind schedule? At what point do we become drastically behind schedule? Or have to have project extensions? The longer we get delayed on through the road?
We'll have to discuss that with O'Meara. Probably something we'll discuss this Thursday. They told us last, last time we met, they said they had three or four weeks of work left, and then they needed to pull off site. So that said, they will come back to complete that work. They still have replacement meters to do, so they still have a significant amount of work to do, it's just not tight installation.
Okay.
So, we'll want to discuss that with them. I was hopeful that we would get the issue resolved, you know, before it came to that point. But I, let me take a look at the contract date, because now that Senniman's extended their schedule 30 days, they may still be within that same window of the total project duration.
Any questions for Rachel? You got something to say?
No, I just...
The proof of the plaque, Rach, just wanted to make sure you, we didn't misspell anybody's name or anything.
So are you still trying to go straight across through the road, or are you talking to the audience?
That's the problem.
I think the ideal situation is just in the ditch line along the north side of 950, but it's, uh...
No, they're quite adamant. The last email I saw was not very promising. We were trying to set up a meeting in person to discuss it. You know, the next step might be, I don't know if the board could reach out to the property owners, if that would be of any help. I know Damon's reached out, it's from Commonwealth, and obviously coming from Commonwealth, it's an outsider, so we were hoping that Damon would be able to...
The lady, the lady that lives there on that property is one of my clients, and...
Oh, you know them?
I don't know the Whites. She lives in the house of the Whites. Won't be a signant. But anyway, they are not, they are not letting her know anything now. I mean, I think that they're, they've had some words.
Well, I think, you know, Commonwealth and Damon will continue to coordinate a little bit, and I'll circle back and give you guys an update. The last email was not too promising, so we may have to change routes and go back behind their property. We can't work this one out.
From what I understand, there's really nothing that they can do for us either.
There is no county right of ways on that road.
And, you know...
It's kind of bad, in a way. I'm surprised about it.
There's quite a few utilities on that road.
Yes.
I've talked to them, and they, both veteran and RMC have utility easements. However, both companies say it's strictly for gas and strictly for electric, so they can't, they can't offer those user easements. That's not in the agreement.
Did they say, Damon, how they got that agreement?
No, I talked to Brian Keith.
And our current line runs up High School Roader 420, right? To, back there? Or are we not supplying the elementary at all right now?
You are, they're rushing. And, and that's part of what we were thinking, maybe if the town could approach them, kind of explain what the intent of the project is, that it's not, you know, the town's not looking to make a bunch of money by annexing people or any of, you know, I don't know what they may think the motive is, just to serve the elementary school.
I don't know how valuable the ditch is anywhere on the side of roadway, but, you know.
It, that may be, it may be helpful.
Following a question along those lines, how long can we delay getting an agreement on that till we throw the whole...
That's what John asked, yeah. Last time we talked to them, they indicated that they were getting close, a couple weeks away from, the contractor was, from being out of work to do, and they would have to pull off site.
So if negotiations with them, say theoretically, went a month, that'd throw them way off.
It would probably set the contractor back.
So is the primary reason that we're piping down 950 is for a pressure requirement for the school that we can't offer off of 420?
Correct. And it's, it's an elevation. They sit at a higher elevation. You guys would have to put out a... We looked at alternatives in the, in the preliminary part about pumping it and that sort of thing, and it just, this was the most cost-effective and long-term.
It was the most cost-effective.
Yeah.
So, and, and maybe I missed this in reading the paperwork on it. Was it ever thought about to pump up, to get the water pressure higher up the elementary school, to install pumps, to pump it?
Yes, we looked, we looked into that in the preliminary report, preliminary study. It's not out of the question, it's just not what we designed, and it's not in the scope that USDA and OCR has approved.
And, and in that respect, I remember when we were first approached for the, the whole project, it was on there, and then we, as a group, decided, hey, you know, maybe we would be better off not to build that other lift station up there, and just because we have trouble with pressure.
There's another water tower. It wasn't just a lift station, it was a complete water tower.
Right, so it was...
That was to use the town water instead of the county.
And it was more cost-effective to do it the way that we'd like to do it, but is...
It's saving $750,000.
Yes, that's quite a big chunk.
I mean, that's a lot of land, you know.
But I'm wondering if, is there another way to go that a way and across to that next road? Is there, it's all the roads...
We could go even farther north?
Yeah, or all the roads don't have...
The latest request is, they asked us to make them an offer for how much...
Okay.
The easement would be. So, our next step, I guess, I don't know if this is a board decision or not.
Oh, okay, we did offer them. Is that right? Okay, I didn't know anything about that.
Which way would be? Buy the easement? No, I'm not saying it right.
No. Should we pay them for the right to go down their line? Is that what you're talking about? Or should we fight them?
And then we have, say in the future, we ran another line or different line or something like that, that we could still go back in there and repair or replace the line that we ran.
Well, I mean, if you bought an easement, you'd be able to use that easement or whatever. And you'd define how wide that easement would be. You're going to end up paying, you're going to have to pay them one way or the other. Either you're going to get to an agreement, or you're going to try to take it as a governmental entity, and then you're still going to have to pay them clear market value for it. I think the issue is what's the clear market value?
What the value is.
I think that I would rather, if I was going to give them some money, I would give them for the, the right to do that, not that we would own it. I'm sure they don't want to sell their property.
I don't agree.
It would only be the right to have it.
They still have the property. You're, you're buying access to use it. You basically have an easement.
And what would it take to declare an easement on that?
Well, you'd have to file an action, an end of domain action.
Right. Wow.
Do people typically take easements? We have easements for practically every senior level in this town.
Well, sometimes...
You don't need anybody anything.
Well, sometimes the town ordinance or their city ordinance will have requirements that if you develop property, you're required to give an easement at the time of... that if you develop property, you're required to give an easement at the time that you develop it.
Right.
And so most of the time, if you're wanting a developer coming in there, they're already giving the easement. And so they're already there. What if you run a situation, they gotta kind of grant a permit later, there's not an easement.
And I, I have no idea how this got to this point because I do think that they would have allowed this had somebody not got in there and screwed stuff up. It wasn't anyone here. It was the people that rent the property and them, because that's why I'm saying they're not even speaking. So that might be what threw the kinker in there. And had we have talked to the whites to start with, we wouldn't be in this situation. Instead of having her, this other lady talk.
Been a learning experience.
It's a learning experience.
And I phrased what I, my question, I phrased in the wrong way. We're paying for an easement, which would give us the ability to go back and repair, replace, and that's, that's, that's what I meant.
But that would be in the wording that we put in it, you know, that we would maintain and upkeep. They'd still own the land though, wouldn't they?
Oh, yeah.
I mean, that's all we can do, isn't it?
It's a permanent utility easement.
Right.
So you have, you would have the right to go in and fix or maintain your property.
Exactly.
But they own the land and they can do it.
You can restrict their ability to disrupt your use.
Exactly.
They can't go in there.
Say, get off my property.
Or they, they worry, they can't do that. They're still on it, but you have the right to use it.
All right, well, that explains that. I just didn't phrase it correctly and gotta watch anymore how you phrase things. I know that.
Well, I hope they hurry and, and give us some information on what they're wanting and we could
Yeah.
talk about it.
And if after Damon and me are back, do you guys feel like?
Yeah, let me know, then I can. I think I could talk to them.
Well, that'd be, that'd be helpful.
But unlike Damon though, you don't want to do anything until you find out if they're gonna accept what, what the offer was. I knew nothing about this offer, so. Oh, it just happened, okay. Okay, I understand.
All righty. Well, with that, with that taken care of or answered, we'll jump in, we'll go, do we want to go back?
There are three things you gotta take action on, I think that she brought up, right?
Yeah, I, I need you to just.
Approve the change order.
Right, oh, yeah, that's right, we didn't do that.
Approve the extension and then approve the paper.
You got that Gloria? What we do first?
Change, um, approve the change order. We'll make a motion on that.
Make a motion for the change order.
You have a second?
Second.
On favor, aye, next.
Make a motion.
The extension.
For the, for the extension.
I'd make the motion that we allow the extension.
You have a second?
Second.
On favor, aye.
Aye.
And then, um, the pay application?
Make a motion for the application to go forward.
My second.
On favor, aye.
Aye.
Thanks Scott. Need to keep me focused.
I'm sorry I'm late, guys. I had a little sickness in the family today and not been, not been a good day.
Some days are like it. Well, I'm glad I have Scott here, he always keeps me focused. Sometimes I need focus.
You're fine.
I check my license.
Fine.
Okay, the next thing we, the next thing we'll go back to, we had on the Westport Town Council Officer Appointment. We passed ordinance last year, we have to vote every year for who the town council president is and also who the vice president is. And we did that kind of a way as checks and balances and give the other two council members a voice and, and say over who is appointed as the town council president and vice president. So with that being said, is there any nominations from the floor?
I nominate that, that Harry stays president.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oh, I can't vote for myself, can I?
You could, but you don't have to.
I don't have to, that's true. I'm just used to going this. Oh, yeah, that's right.
Yeah.
Okay, I, I will recommend that John is vice president.
And I will second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Okay, next up, we've got future wastewater project and...
So we go from water to wastewater. So I have three things for Harry to sign. This is part of our, this is the letters that Brady was supposed to bring last week and he forgot to bring them. That's for the environmental review for the wastewater preliminary engineering report. So there's tabs for you to sign, Harry. In order to fulfill our IDEM milestones and our agreed orders, we would need you to accept the preliminary engineering report that we presented in our meeting last week. It doesn't mean that you're committing to doing any of the projects that are in there. It just shows that we have fulfilled to IDEM what we said that we were going to do and to make sure that we are capturing that milestone and letting them know that we did the study.
I make the motion that we accept those as you have written and we're studying them now and that you did present them to us.
I have a second.
Second.
All in favor, aye. We do all right Scott?
Hey, good.
Thank you, yes. Now I'll allow Brady to now submit that quarterly report that was due in December as we discussed.
Keep us out of hot water.
Moving forward and we, we discussed, you know, there's some things in the report. We reviewed everything in the report. We talked about maybe trying to look for some funding, not saying that you're gonna commit to any part of the project, but right now would be a good time to at least fill out a USDA application to see what they come back with, to see what kind of funding package that they do come up with. And it would just require me and Gloria to work together. And I wanted to see if you would authorize that so that we could just at least get the ball rolling and then just start discovering what we can do and.
And what is the cost of the, of filing for that? Nothing. I, I make the motion that we at least go ahead and look into that before it gets any worse. And while there are, is, I just noticed today or yesterday that somebody got a huge wastewater. Yes, there's money there. So we need to at least get it looked at to see if we can get any.
Yeah, it, it's no cost. It's exactly what we did for, and I know I wasn't involved in the water, but it's an application that I, we had started. I'll sit down with Gloria, we'll put financial information together and, and some of your...
As long as she has some help with those, okay.
Oh, I'm, that's, that's what I'm here to do. I'm your, your volunteer.
They're tough, aren't they?
Yeah, that's a lot of work.
Yes, they are.
But we're also hoping that in 2021 that there will be some stimulus money. So I'm hoping that we will get a really good package. I mean, based on your circumstances with the water and that with wastewater, let's just see what we can do and start negotiating on, on what we can get.
Absolutely. Sounds good.
We will do our best to find what we can, so. Gloria and I will set something up to get that done and I think that's everything I have, if I missed anything? No? Just Harry signing the environmental.
There, there's a motion on the floor that we accept this and there is a second, all in favor, aye. And for the people that will be seeing this on, what, Facebook Live? What we're doing, this isn't a commitment, this is just an exploration time of looking into the, taking care of our wastewater problem with IDEM. So I want to stress that we haven't signed any paperwork to commit to do it. This is just exploration only. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. This I kind of have to explain. I got, this was sent down from Chris Devol from Area Plan and I asked her about it and she said that the Westport Town Council years ago signed all these ordinances and plans of, I don't know, what would you call this?
It's, it's, it's county ordinances.
County ordinances, zoning ordinances. And, uh, and the reasoning behind that was the town, previous town council or wherever, how far back this goes, didn't have the funds to come up with, uh, planning and, uh, having their own, uh, building inspector and this and this and this. So the county, we signed it away to the county on that. And tonight, we're signing an update, one, two, three, four, five updates. I'm not gonna read this whole thing, needless to say. Yeah.
We started on that last one, remember?
No, I know. But any, anyway, they, uh, Area Plan wanted us to sign this or approve it.
Adopted.
Adopted, I'm sorry. Thank you for, that's right, adopted, not approved.
And I think, um, I think personally can we have our own ordinances on top of these ordinances? Okay, that's what, the only thing that I'm concerned about. I know, I work on this board, so I know what that is. It's a, it's terrible. But we have our own and, and at that time, uh, like you said, I don't think the board knew that they could, they didn't have the money or somebody to do it.
Yeah.
To, to, so we did adopt that. Some of the county ordinances does not pertain to us though.
Right.
And, you know, I want to just, if we go ahead and sign that, we, we just need to know that we don't have to, we have to abide by it, so you don't agree?
No, I, I talked to you.
It'll be enforced. It'll be up to you guys to enforce.
Exactly.
If it's in place.
Okay.
But just like, uh, remember when we, oh, Brian, um, Brian McCullough come down, we signed, uh, variance on that? We can still do that. We still have the ability to do that.
We've been functionally working around the last one that we signed, you know, by, you know, people in the town coming to us before they approached the planning commission for resolving. We haven't had any issues yet.
No, uh-uh, we're okay with that.
What are we gonna say Scott?
I don't think the changes are very major either. I think you guys have been working with the others
Yeah.
for like the years. I'm, the town doesn't have a zone, zoning ordinance, does it?
We wanted to make one here, where, how long ago was that?
And I'm assuming that's why we have this.
Right, I, I don't think at the time that they really wanted to do it.
In the, in the code, you know, where it's prescribed, you know, for the comprehensive plan. There's all kinds of things that have to be placed and we just don't have that infrastructure.
And this was basically that aside.
Right, right. And they'll, they still make us sign off on it before they'll get someone to permit to build here. So that leaves us at least saying yay or nay.
Relationship, so I don't see.
Yeah, it's a good relationship, so, yeah, I think we should stay with it. So I make the motion that we go ahead and sign.
You have a second?
Second.
All in favor, aye?
The motion was to adopt the ordinance.
Yeah, we're adopting the ordinance and the motion was to adopt the ordinance.
The ordinance, there's, I think there's several of them here. I guess for record keeping purposes, you just want to keep a copy of that within minutes. So let me know what's been approved.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm trying to think about what binder I want to put that in.
Big one.
We didn't, we didn't have it, then the question becomes, okay, what within the ordinances are, are signed? So you just want to make sure you get a copy of it.
Okay.
Unfortunately, it won't be.
Good idea. Next, we have the water meter replacement costs and fines.
Harry, um, Damon brought this to our attention and we kind of wanted to present it to see what you guys thought and then we probably need to create some kind of ordinance or resolution regarding the amount of cost and how we would handle it. But with the new water meters, um, it has a little antenna and it's a little bit more breakable than what we've had in the past. Here's a cost sheet of how much it costs to replace the parts. Well, there, maybe Damon can explain it.
No, it's not.
The radio read is, uh, it makes us an antenna. The message is public inspection of the antenna on top of the lid. My concern now is when people start mowing their lids over as they do now, this will be just for parts alone, $248.30 for rest of the lid.
What do we do about the ones that's right in the middle of the driveway?
Uh, well, those are gonna be mounted underneath.
Okay.
At all parts I have found now, which will be much cheaper for the project, they make a stand because they're just putting the antenna right below. They may get stand because there and just put the antenna right below.
I think it's also something we may want to look into our future budgets to account for a certain number of failures or breakages so that we have a coffer for that, that we could pull something off out of them. Make those repairs as necessary.
They do it now, you know, around, you know, 40 bucks. And we do replace them, we replace several here. So you start replacing the antenna, it's going to be a pretty large fault.
Yeah.
Is there any more discussion on this? Let me know. We got a game plan, what we're going to do.
I think Gloria will get with Damon and we'll figure out what to say to have people to understand that these are costly and take care of it.
Specific in there that indicates they caused if you caused them employee COVID-19 policy renewal and update. John, did you want to take care of that? Do you want to read it or any questions?
Do we have to read this and sign this this evening? Or do we have or can we read and sign? Or does it have to be brought twice?
This is so this is the same policy that we had last year, and we did it as a resolution last year. And so I put it in as a resolution again, which means.
We'll be okay.
Yeah, and I highlighted the update. So I went on CDC website and just updated what they're saying the guidelines are as of now. There was a couple of things that have changed compared to last year. So anything that's highlighted is the changes. And the the second group of reports is last year's policy. In case you want to compare the differences.
I think it's okay. I make a motion that we'll go ahead and update that for the time being.
The only thing that I might see as an issue is it being based on the latest guidance for CEDancy, because all of our employees are considered, what's that word, the
Essential?
The essential employee, which means that there is no mandatory quarantine required for the employee unless they're actually sick. So, I mean, if we're going to follow the guideline, that that's okay. But if we want to adopt our own to work around that, that's a different thing. So if our policy wants to reflect what what we would rather choose to see happen as opposed to the essential employee guideline brought by the CDC, we may want to modify that.
Give me an instance, give me for instance, I mean.
Essential employees as defined by the CDC, okay? Which all the employees in this government, whether it be the Water Department, Police Department, or here inside the office, are considered essential employees. So there's no mandatory requirement for a quarantine if you have an exposure.
Right.
Whereas our policy does.
Okay, I understand. Well, what do you want to do? What do you what do you think?
I mean, if 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 that's the route that the employees want to go, we just need to remove the verbiage that we're following the CDC guideline and we're not we're just creating our own policy.
You guys are the one that wrote it, so.
It's just something it's just something that I noted from the last time.
Yeah.
You know what I mean, so.
Like, take that note, note, this is based on the latest guidance, just strike that out.
Yeah, strike you, strike that.
Okay. If I could just do that, and we could probably still still use. The only other thing that one of them.
Essentially, we're using CDC guidelines, but.
Adopt that note.
Change.
Right, yeah.
Yeah. The other thing, someone mentioned, John, that if we ask someone to stay home, there's nothing in this policy that would say they have to stay home. And there was just some questions about that. So I didn't know if you wanted to add anything about that either.
Scott, have you seen this?
I don't.
There you go.
And and I'm certain a lot of employers right now have been struggling with this. And quite honestly, I don't know the answer to it. And I don't know if Scott be able to lend us any guidance on this. But I think if you're being told to stay home in quarantine and you're being paid for the time.
Why would you go to?
I think that would be the expectation that you remain quarantined. Because if you're not remaining quarantined, then that time continues to be extended from the time that you reexpose yourself or to others. So I don't I don't really know the answer to that or how that's been handled.
Well, I I know that, for an instance, there was a couple of nursing homes that told their their workers, if you have it, come on. If you're not sick, just make sure you mask up and wash your hands. And I'm thinking, are you kidding me? And she said, I swear that happened.
Considered essential employees on the CDC guideline.
So it's okay for them to go.
Well, if if they have an exposure now, now if they're sick and actually tested positive, I don't believe the guideline.
Right, but that's what they did. If they they said, we're so shorthanded. If if you're not too sick, just put your mask and wash your hands and come on.
Yeah, I don't I.
I know, I don't like that. I just it's kind of scary, isn't it? But it happened.
Where's the next one?
What was your question, Jim, Gloria?
So.
So, for example, we had a situation where there was an exposure and the staff was asked to stay home for a week and the staff refused to stay home. And we have nothing in our policy that says, yes, you have to stay home.
You have to quarantine. Was that a paid quarantine?
Yes.
You're not the only thing here regarding exposure, are you?
Just a tiny bit.
Uh, yeah. We're about first.
Yeah.
I don't know, I think so.
Paid quarantine, because the way it's written now, if we have any sickness or current time, we have to use it first.
Right. We didn't like that either.
I thought there was I thought we had changed.
I thought we changed it too to where.
I thought that was.
That's not the way I understood it. Now, I'm just I'm just.
I thought that was modified the last time. I thought that was a change to this one.
No, 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 no.
Lots of times, I believe that's the way it's written.
Yeah, that's how it's written, number seven.
Is that the way you read it?
Yeah, that's the way I just read it, too.
There's nothing on the books that it was fixed. There was discussion, but it was never nothing that's adopted or changed.
And we may have never amended it. But I guess the question is, Scott, if if you're on a paid administrative leave for that quarantine, because it's required by the employer, would you be expected to remain in the quarantine?
But I think the employer can make that decision.
No, no, no. I mean, if if you're quarantined at the house, getting paid by the town because you've been exposed, and then you're hiking off doing a second job or working on the side, not remaining quarantined, re-exposing yourself.
That's that'd be just. Get paid.
Yeah.
And I know for Tony County, what they've done is said you can work from home if you're required to work from home during the COVID.
Right.
If you have the ability.
That's another another thing, too.
So what do we need to change? I mean, we will table.
Well, number seven, if you want if you want to make those adjustments, you'll definitely have to rewrite number seven.
Well, we table it for our next meeting.
And, you know, if you want to still have the CDC guideline in there, you could say that, you know, follow the CDC guidelines for non-essential employees. It's written for non-essential employees.
Otherwise, do you want to have anything outlined? You know, like the 24 hours or 14 days or any of that? Do you want any specifics in there?
Well, now it's down to 10.
Yeah, because you have to be you have to be, I mean, what you have in there is exactly what's required. Because because you may you you may get to your 10th day, but still have a fever. So, I mean, you can't be going back out at that time. I mean, if you're still sick. Those are the guidelines that I've been.
I think looking for two skies, the right way to do this. We all of our employees, we have a limited number and are all critical to the functioning of this town. And we got to do the best we can to protect each employee because there we got so much work to do and Damon does and his crew and all that. We're working on all this, and we've got to keep them as safe as possible. And and Joe and and his group, we've got to keep them safe. We just don't have an abundance of people going around to fill the role.
I think one of the biggest things is is if somebody has been exposed and they're risking re-exposure while they're on a quarantine.
Right.
They could possibly extend that exposure. Maybe you just end the paid administrative leave.
And what if they refuse to leave?
Refuse to leave what?
We ask them to quarantine, but they refuse to?
Well, that's what I'm saying. If they refuse to, then there's no paid administrative leave.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
But would do we pay them to continue working?
And that's that's the conflict there.
What?
There's not so much to pay. It's like when when somebody's told to stay home because we're trying to follow the guideline and they refuse because there's nothing in our guideline that says, yes, you will stay home. See what I'm saying? So when an employee says, no, I'm not staying home.
Maybe just in the number seven, there'd be paid administrative leave as long as you follow the quarantine guidelines as directed by the employer.
I get that, but that's not the pay thing. It's there's nothing that says that, yes, you will stay home. If you've had an exposure or.
Well, I don't know if we're legally capable in doing anything like that.
Yeah, I mean, as an employer, you can tell them that they can't be here.
No, no, here, but but if we tell them to quarantine at home and, you know, you see them at Walmart and they're not obviously not quarantining.
No, they're that's not what we're saying. They are coming in and still working.
Yeah, they still want to work here.
There was an incident where we asked someone to stay home for a week, but they refused and they came in and they collected a paycheck.
Is it because they didn't want to use their sick time?
I don't know that. I wouldn't think that's a problem. I want us to.
I mean, that's not an issue. I mean, as an employer, you can you can say, no, you're not working.
But again, if they feel that they're falling underneath the essential guidelines of the CDC, and that's the requirement that we're following.
I think some quick change, I mean, just some changes to make. You know, any any exposure would require them not to be at work. It probably. Right, the way it's written, if this has experienced symptoms or if you live with a person who experienced the symptoms, then you're not allowed to come in. It doesn't really talk about somebody's been exposed or having had exposure.
Well, if you make that close contact again, then.
Some places are saying the management is coming down and saying, I highly suggest that you take that shot. Where do we stand as a government entity?
I don't know. I don't know the answer to that. That's it. Have you ever has the government ever forced anybody to take a shot yet? Now, this is going to be new territory for everybody on whether or not they're going to, you know, a governmental agency is allowed to require employees to get shots or citizens of the town can get shot. I mean, there's going to be a whole, there's going to be attorneys making a lot of money. I'm trying to argue.
Well, y'all imagine.
It's crazy.
Yeah, I just wondered out of curiosity, as we as a.
And if you want to get the shot either.
Right.
If you have heart problems and stuff, then you can't get the shot.
Well, I know I already know. My shot?
No. I don't think it's available to them yet.
You have to be over eighty. He's not over eighty.
She's poking at your hair. I appreciate it. Sometimes I'll be over eighty. No, I mean, you know, we're trying to be as prepared as the town council as we can be on things. And looking ahead is that's an individual choice. I mean, I look at it as an individual choice.
That's taking away your rights to force you to.
All right. Because I know I.
I don't foresee us.
We as the town council, not going to force our employees or come back and say, we highly suggest you get your shots.
That's all you can do, seriously.
I mean, we highly suggest you wash your hands either. We don't know that you are.
All righty.
So, Harry, I can work on edits and I'll send it to Scott to kind of cover everything and we'll try to get something a little bit more detailed.
Yeah.
Yeah, and now we cover some of the other situations we've run into, especially number seven, if that's the route that we want to handle it.
We'll do that and get it ready for the next meeting. We've already voted to continue the old one. Okay, is there anything else on the agenda? I think we got everything covered, didn't we? Oh, for an FYI, starting in April of this year, we're going to start the town cleanup again. And there'll be a notice again with the water and sewer bill being an envelope, again, reminding people what the town ordinance is. And we'll also during that month, too, have it start with another dumpster. And we're going to get going again on that. We met with a lot of success this year in Westport. I've had some people come into Westport and say it looks a lot better than what it did. So that's positive. Also, within that, we realized it's some people that physically may not be able to or other means not be able to do the cleanup. If you will call them into town hall and stress your need, we will try to get an agency or somebody to help you clean up. So and if the other people decide, nope, I'm not going to go with that route. I do not want to clean up, I'm not going to change anything. Well, and that's where the fines start coming back in again. But anyway, kind of a heads up, when the weather breaks, April, we're going to start up back up on it again. Okay, with that, we'll go to the floor. Joe, oh, wait a minute, Joe, no. Joe, get the police report.
I don't know that we've got to read them.
No, you don't have to. Any, any.
Any questions with the with the police department?
Yeah, I was going to give Joe some time there. He sits over in the corner and I thought, well, he wanted to answer anything, go ahead and.
It was a direct result of your job.
Yeah.
I'd like to say something about the police department. I appreciate you guys a whole lot, a bunch, all of you.
Yeah.
Thank you. I'm glad I did too.
I'll take anything from the floor. Joe, do you have anything to say? Scott? Steve?
Just so you know, this police reports that are given now are on the Westport Police's website.
Oh, okay.
All right.
Current stats, so like tomorrow, those will be on the site if anyone wants to see what it is that's given to you.
All right.
I did have something, Harry.
Yes.
I just wanted to let everybody recognize the Westport Police Department.
Uh huh.
The last few calls that I've been on today, for example, we got a lady.
we will try to get an agency or somebody to help you clean up. So, and if the other people decide, nope, I'm not going to go that route, I do not want to clean up, I'm not going to change anything, well, and that's where the fines start coming back in again. But anyway, kind of a heads up, uh, when the weather breaks, April, we're going to start up, back up on it again. Okay, with that, we'll go to the floor. Joe, oh, wait a minute, Joe, no. Joe, get the police report.
I don't know that we've got to read him.
No, you don't have to. Any, any...
Any questions with the, with the police department?
Yeah, I was going to give Joe some time there. He sits over in the corner, and I thought, well, if he wants to answer anything, go ahead and...
As a direct result of your job.
I'd like to say something about the police department. I appreciate you guys a whole lot, a bunch, all of you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So...
I'm glad I did too.
Uh, take anything from the floor. Joe, do you have anything to say? Scott? Steve?
Just so you know, those police reports that are given out are on the Westport Police's website.
Oh, okay.
All right.
Current status, like, tomorrow, those will be on the site, if anyone wants to see what it is that's given to you.
All righty.
I did have something, Harry.
Yes.
I just wanted to let everybody recognize the Westport Fire Department.
Uh-huh.
Um, the last few calls that I've been on, uh, today, for example, we got a lady who had smoke. She couldn't figure out where it's coming from. She came to me directly, uh, Damon and I got ahold of this guy, so we told people out. We were the first to know it, and the Westport Fire was almost, I mean, within 30 seconds to a minute, with their response.
Uh-huh.
Um, so I just want to shout out and thanks to them.
Excellent fire department.
We got a good bunch of people here.
Yeah. Really working good.
Yeah.
Brian, anything? Sheriff?
Yes.
Uh, oh, you do have something?
What are we working on, Main Street part?
I guess you do have something.
I guess I do.
Okay.
We had the folder there and everything, we were wondering.
Of course, you know, we have taken over all three festivals, Cover Bridge, all festivals, Christmas is our. We are sending out our invitations to the vendors, offering them all three spots. We have the sanitizing stations all purchased and now.
Yes, what are we doing next? That's what I wanted you to say.
Oh. The spaghetti? Easter, Easter, okay.
Swap meet?
Yeah, but somebody said they got the community bar.
Oh, animals. Animal, you want to talk about that bar?
No, you can't.
Okay, it doesn't matter because the, the shelter house at the community building belongs to the town. But we were approached at the farmer's market last year, and there was some gentleman that wanted to do an animal swap meet there. And we said, why not? You know, if you got a sheep and you want to trade it for a cow, I don't care. You got chickens to sell, or... So, we thought it was a great idea. We love this. And our farmer's market is fabulous. It, last summer was really, really fabulous. We have the best farmer's market around.
And that is, that's, uh, Jerry and Kelsey Henderson.
Yeah, but I think it's a great idea, because if they have, you know, farmers, and I know you do, I do, I come from a family, and they're always swapping and, and doing this and that and the other, and we have sheep and chickens and cows, and you name it, out the farm now, and just one after the other. If anybody needs some eggs, let me know. Other than that, that was, that was good, but I wanted you to talk about the Easter egg thing. We will have, hello?
Yeah, yeah, COVID lets us, yes. April 3, at 1:00 p.m., we are going to have an Easter egg hunt.
For the whole town?
For the whole town. Um, we do have an Easter bunny coming.
And it's going to lay eggs.
Are you going to swap them with meat?
I'm going to make sure you got going.
Oh, okay, okay.
Uh, we have eight categories, zero to two, three to five, six to eight, and nine to 12.
Where are the eggs getting over?
We have it, it's all egg hunt, they're funny.
It's just kind of in the works now. COVID lets us.
Yeah.
Are there going to be plastic eggs for these?
Plastics.
They'll have prizes and stuff.
They'll have prizes, annual prizes. Well, they do that too for the animal swap.
They sell eggs at the end of the swap.
Never know, it's not be interesting.
It, it will be a lot of fun and, and...
But we are giving out our chili cook-off.
This year?
This year. Where we had the nonprofits, everybody, there's the police department, fire department, uh, each brought a...
Talking about, we have our, um, excellent fire department putting on a chili supper, so we're going to try to help them promote that to get more, more people out for that. And then we'll just go ahead and start with the Easter egg hunt, because we haven't had that before. Do you want any? Right. It's true, but I think when, with our, I think that if, with us helping them, it'll even be a bigger event, and, and it'll, it'll be good. Um, right now, this time of year, we are also looking for new volunteers for the, for the new projects that we've got. And anybody can do that. You don't even have to live in town. If you just have some ideas on how to help out and, and help everybody, uh, set up these festivals and things. You know, I enjoyed it so much when I was younger, uh, I could, I would have done anything for the town, and, and I still will. So I think that any of you that, out there or here, that would like to join Main Street, please do so, because this is our time of year that we're doing volunteer drives. First mon, first Monday every month, and evening is our, uh, meeting at the community building, 6 o'clock.
All righty, anything else?
Do you have a date on the animal swap?
Um, whenever the, the farmers that's wanting to do this, we'll, and we'll have to let you know when, are they going to call you if they decide to?
I'm just going to follow their page.
Okay.
They're just communicating with each other right now.
Okay.
And they're just getting more members.
I would say that as the weather breaks, I think it will really be pretty good, pretty big this summer. Maybe coinciding with the farmer's market.
I sure wish I could change, uh, exchange some bowls with somebody for something good.
Make a coat out of it.
Yeah, that'd work. All right, our representative from the, I don't, what's your name again? I'm sorry, what?
Ms. Morgan.
Ms. Morgan, you have anything? You sure? Damon?
Yeah, uh, the voluntary member of the council where CrossFit Pilates, uh, we did one, and they decided to do that for something for dollars. Which are very cheap, they're spending a couple thousand.
Right.
Uh, who wants to come to you as well, except the $800 for a pair of shoes, and, uh, and then, uh, the, uh, land of the town purchase of the present house over here. Uh, we got the quote I'm going to take now, I think roughly, maybe fifteen, sixteen thousand. I don't see any reason why Cole and I can't, now with the rent escalator.
Yeah.
It's a lot of money. I priced, roughly I got a price, it'd be about four, four thousand, or four thousand, forty-five hundred. For an escalator, picking up the, for the mod. I'm not saying it would take a mod, but obviously we can't commute. Every, every day, because we've got other obligations, because it's all taking over. We can get it for the mod, they said we only keep it a week, two weeks, whatever, then that's all we can go for.
Right.
But they gave you an exact price, uh, so we actually opened up an account there, the Calistrations, the Old Irons, the House of...
And Damon, would, would, would that be to take care of the, the refuse tube? With all the wood and the stuff that you're taking out? Would that take, is that price that you're giving us, no?
No, no, that's just the rental of the escalator.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we're separate, we'll slide that dumpster, that's just the rent escalator, so there we have, obviously, we have a, a gravel, all this is on.
Okay. We were kind of counting, counting the cost and maximum dumpsters, hoping for around 10 or 11,000, which is still cheaper than what anybody has quoted us, so I'm, I still think it's a lot.
But we'll see, there's a lot.
Well, between equipment, fuel, and dumpsters, I mean, that's where you're pretty much...
Right, that's quite a bit of money.
I mean...
But I mean, if you look at the house, you think, there's no way it's going to take 10 dumpsters, but if you walk through the house, you're like, it might not, it might not do it. I'm telling the house, it's full.
Oh, for what?
John, people just move out, move trash.
It's just full of trash.
Yeah. Yeah, cats too.
I'm going to tell them, Gloria, if the town wants us to do it, it's either I have to be like right now, before mow season, or it's when I have to wait until next winter.
Well, if, if we did that, we'd have to contact the previous owner, because we didn't, we gave him time, you know, gave him some time, no, we're not going to be doing it right now, but to get it before April, but we'd have to talk to him, try to move his timeline up, or either that, take out what he wants out of there and just set it aside, and he picks it up when he wants to pick it up.
What, there hasn't been anyone in that house for a year. Why is there anything in it? I mean, why did they leave it to start? I don't think they wanted.
He specifically said he wanted the furnace, and anything else he deemed feasible, that's in the agreement that we signed.
Okay, and would, did you put a time on it?
No.
We just told him on April, because we were thinking we wouldn't start until the spring, so now we'll have to call and make sure.
Yeah, just call back up and explain the situation to them, that we're going to take it down, instead of having somebody else do it, we need him to remove what he has. It, it, is the furniture and all that just?
Junk.
Junk? Well...
There's hats coming in and out.
Oh, yeah, it sounds good.
There's holes in the floors and the foundations gone behind that old beauty shop. You know, so it's, it's damaged so bad, I don't know how anything can be good.
Right, I mean, if you guys want us to, we're going to have to, we're going to have to start with it, because we have mow season.
Yeah, now you're saying that.
It's not going to be long as we do it.
Would the fire department be interested in burning it?
No.
Returning?
They'll, they'll do that if you want them to. Especially when, you know, you got the police work on one side, you just got to remodel the building. Not a good way to get your ability. The plus with the house, you know, next door, you're going to be waiting, you're going to wait until now.
Well, that, that, yeah, all right, we'll get in contact with him and explain to him the situation, say as quickly as possible, and if he can get to it, could, how much trouble is it to remove what he wants, and set it, set it aside somewhere and say, here it is, you come and get it.
I don't know if they really want to get involved in that, if he wants, he needs to come and get it.
All right.
I'd just say here, we, our schedule has moved up, and you can get it.
So they stuck in the wood, what then, get it down?
I, I would say so, I mean, yeah.
Yeah, what about the tree? They bought a tree up to where the public can just shoot.
We have the tree, okay, I make the motion.
Is it in the gaze, area of the gazebo there, is that where it's at?
Yeah, it's huge, it's so big and nasty.
There's no danger, but it's not falling up like that, it's just we're constantly cleaning up after the wall, and everybody's always complaining about it.
What one did they do?
Uh, that's the ones on the Zingo side. They cleaned it, and that's the guy that gives the, sets our all the...
So the other one, just right next to it, on back towards the building?
Um, that is a good price. I, I know we've had it to grand up here.
Did you make a motion?
I made the motion that we go ahead with that.
On favor, aye? Anything else, Damon?
All got it.
Okay. That's enough.
Yes, Steve?
With the equipment, with the equipment that we're using, is it possible to get a lock cabinet that we can put in here, so that we don't have to set it up, take it down, set it up like the main equipment? And this stuff is different, but as far as, there is room between that and here, that we can set the microphone stuff in there, the laptop can sit in there, et cetera, we can set it up, so the wire is right there, and we don't have to unwire it. Wire, unwire, wire. Is that cabinet in your code that you used to be here?
Is there anything we can do about that? Did you hear what he's asking about?
Oh, it's... Is that AA's cabinet?
It's our cabinet, if you want to use it, we can put a padlock on it.
It's A, we've been using it for AA supplies, because they have so much paperwork and stuff.
But they have...
They've been using it, um, because if they don't put it there, then it's out here, or it's taking up all the cabinets. So we gave them that, um, we're just, I think we can, we can afford to figure out something, we just got to figure out what's going to work.
Because AA stuff doesn't need to be locked up.
Right, right, yeah.
So it's going to be something else, like bins, and get some of those.
Yeah, if, if you think we can look at a solution, then...
We only had half those cabinets a year ago, and now we've got too much? I, I don't know, I mean, I agree with you.
I mean, if it's something we're going to be using Hudson.
Yeah, it needs to be locked up.
Needs to be locked up.
Well, right now...
Taking it down, putting it in her office.
Yeah.
Then we got to come in the afternoon, set it up, and then we have to get it going again for the evening, so it'd be nice if the equipment's there, where you just turn it on, put the lights out, can I?
I agree.
That won't work, I have it.
Really?
Yeah, so if we get a couple of plastic bins, maybe, that you get a wall of storage bins for AA stuff, or put it in, I think you just take this out of it.
Yeah, we can have another thing to the top of that for the AA stuff.
Yeah.
Or vice versa, just...
We'll figure it out.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll figure it out, we'll do that.
I don't think it's too difficult.
Do we have to make a motion?
I don't think.
Just we're going to pick spray.
Do we need to motion that? I don't think so.
No, I don't think you have to.
Just the office supplies, fund the...
I want to thank Barbara for sending me a message. Thank you. I was just beside myself when she asked me where I was.
Do I have a motion on the floor to...
Yes, you do.
Close meeting, I do, I have a second.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thanks, everyone, for participating in the January 11th meeting.